Work session, Buckingham County Planning Commission's work session for November 20th. Please stand as Commissioner Doria will lead us in our invitation and Supervisor Allen will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray.
Lord, we just come to you with grateful hearts. We thank you for all your blessings. We thank you for letting us meet tonight for this commission. We thank you for the rain that may be coming to help us all in the county and throughout the area. Be with us now throughout the meeting. We ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Just to establish some form, we have seven of eight, so we do have a form. Nikki, adoption agenda, is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Don't move.
Okay. All the favor raised are ready. I hope it was approved. Discussion topics as a comprehensive plan. Todd, I'll get you to come on up to the front and take over the meeting.
Okay, doke. So, we're going to just go over draft sections two and three. And I have just a real brief update on the surveys. Lauren, by the way, sends her apologies. She is out sick today, so she couldn't make it tonight. So, you're stuck with me. But Lauren is still working on tabulating survey results. We got just under 500 surveys, which is actually pretty good. Just by basis of comparison, I know Charlotte County is a smaller county by a small margin, but we only got 224. So, that gives you an idea. It's, you did pretty well. So, we're hoping to have those survey results for you next week. But if you look in your packet, draft section two, and I believe there were some changes made since the last work session.
I'm not sure.
What page is that?
Page five. It's starting with page five.
Five, that's right.
I know one thing she did on page, Lauren did on page 11 was, a couple of things. Page 11, figure four, there's a, there's a, you have two lines there, one showing the population, one showing a linear pattern, just giving an idea what the trend has been like. And we are using the 2021 census population estimates for the latest population there.
Can we ask questions as we go along here, Todd?
Yes.
So, with regard to that particular projection, it doesn't look like we got any real growth over the period. So, the question I would ask you is, I, two questions, actually. How does it, how would this compare to other counties in the region? And is it necessary or is it advisable for us to have that kind of a comparison in this report?
Well, at the end of the day, the second question, that's the planning commission's call. We usually include this to give the reader an idea what the population trend is like. Now, I'm assuming yours on figure four on page 11?
Right.
Okay. So, as far as comparisons with other counties, then we, we actually, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do have, due back on figure one, we do show a population trend comparison going through 2020. But that's census population. The difference is figure four is population estimates. If that is confusing, we can definitely entertain doing things a little differently there.
For me, it was. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels.
Okay.
How much trouble would it be to have that information, Todd?
You mean add the, add the other counties to the population estimates?
Yes.
I mean, we could definitely add it in. It's just a matter of adjusting the table.
All right, just do it on the same chart?
I believe we can do that, yeah.
Okay. I think, I agree with Pete. I think it would be beneficial to see what the neighboring counties are doing, if, you know, if they're growing or whether they're declining as well as in populations.
We have to try and color code it, yeah, yeah. We can, we can look into adding that.
And it might be, Todd, if, if that, if that figure four is too difficult for you to put all those counties on that one particular chart, it'd be too confusing. You might want to consider putting them on figure five. Because you own, what you've done is you've, you've picked out four data points.
Right. I see what you're saying. And actually, that's going to be the next thing I went to. We did add the 2020 census to figure five to give you a, to make it look a little less skewed as far as what the projections show going forward. And there was some verbiage added above figure five. So, I'll defer to the commission on that. I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's really what the commission's pleasure is, if it's, if it's too confusing, we can take out figure four altogether and just put, put it all on figure five.
What's, you know, what's the commission think?
As long as we identify, you know, we know what counties we're talking about.
Yeah, I think the comparison will be good and just, either one or whatever's simplest for you as far as making the, adding the addition and making the change. But I agree, as long as we understand what county it's representing.
Okay.
I think figure four and figure five do two different things. One shows, you know, the, the last decade where we're trying to see, I think figure five is actually important as a standalone to see what our projected is. My only comment to figure five would be to go to an increment of 500 as you did in figure four, just so that line has a little more context.
We can tweak that. So, but yeah, we can, for figure four, we can definitely insert the other counties and see what that looks like and bring that back to you.
Okay, thank you.
And going on, I'm just going to go with the stuff that's highlighted as far as the changes, but if you see something, please feel free to stop me. Moving over to page 15, we did add verbiage under education about the private schools. But please take a look at that and let me know if that, anything looks out of whack there.
Hey, before we, before we get there, I'd refer you back to figure seven.
Okay.
Specifically, it looks like our, our young people are either getting older or we're getting more, more older people in and our young people are either leaving or just plain getting older. I'm not sure how that, how to read that particular chart. But what, what I notice is that the demographics are changing, the age demographics are changing significantly. And if you, as you go out in, toward 2050. So, the question is, and I don't know how much context you put into this thing, are there, are there issues that need to be brought forward or are there reasons or are there, what, what is it? This chart tells me in numbers, one thing, but I don't know how to interpret it. You know what I'm saying?
I'm, I'm not sure I follow you.
Well, if you take a look at our older population between 2010 and 2050, they're growing.
Mm-hmm.
Between 2010 and 2050, our younger population, our population's leaving. So, a couple of things could be happening here. Either we're becoming a bedroom community or people aren't leaving and they're just getting older or basically, we're losing our young people going somewhere else. So, the question is, what is it? I mean, I'm looking at, there's a number of things. This chart, if we knew really what it represented, may tell us some things about what we'd have to do in order to continue to grow the county. This is a good chart.
So, would you like some verbiage, would you like some verbiage expanding on, on?
It might be helpful. I don't know, I don't know what it is.
Okay.
Again, I don't know, I'm, I'm asking the commission. Do you all understand it or do you?
But I get what you're saying.
So, what you're asking for is maybe a narrative underneath it, just stating some assumptions as why this is going to occur?
Yeah, that's what I think, yeah, because I think it's a good chart. It might tell us, it might tell the county what they could do in order to sustain growth or even improve growth if we knew basically how this chart was put together, what the assumptions are.
Okay.
Are you, are you fine with that, Todd?
Yeah, we can, we can add some verbiage.
Basically, just you can create a narrative with a bullet points of why the assumptions are causing this.
Mm-hmm.
And that way, we can address them and maybe in detail with our planning and districts and all, and as we get further into.
Definitely.
People moving here and retiring. People moving here and retiring at an older age.
That's a whole lot of, not job opportunities as while you're young and leaving.
I know down there voting, the other day, there was a lot more people had moved into county and they were, all no young ones.
Out and starting families elsewhere.
Yes, I'll make a note for that. Did anybody have any questions on the next page, 14, the racial characteristics in the group quarters? If not, I'll jump to page 15. I added the verbiage about the private schools there. Feel free to comment on that.
Actually, I thought it was pretty good, pretty thorough.
And one thing we did add, you may have noticed pages 18 and 19, we, for comparison's sake, we pulled some historical data on accreditation. I'll give you a chance a second to look at that.
Yeah, it appears to me that we lost some positioning over the, in the current year. And I noticed that. I mean, I think those are good, but is that basically the story that I'm looking at here? Gone from some green to some red? Is that the way you read it?
Does appear, does appear that way, yeah.
I think that's an important chart for us because it would tell us exactly what we might need to do in order to help improve that area. I wonder if you have any opportunity at all to add something in there that would relate to vocational training in those three charts? Or would it be important? I mean, it seems to me that we have a lot of people in the vocations here. Is that something that's available or is that something that?
We'd have to address it separately. These charts are about accreditation and those are confined to certain subjects.
Okay.
But if, if you want to discuss vocational, we can definitely cover that separately.
I'm just wondering, Mr. Chairman, whether or not we ought to have something in this comprehensive plan that talks about the opportunity of vocations and whether or not that would help our schools determine whether or not the vocational training that they do offer is, is ample enough or whether they should, should increase it in that regard. I mean, not everybody wants to go to college and it seems to me colleges are being downplayed these days anyway. It is, but in our area, vocations do play a significant role in, in keeping people employed here. And I wonder if maybe there's some, there's something that should be in, in the comprehensive plan that would cover that.
Well, I know we can, we can just cover that in, in both special policy areas and goals and objectives. I guess the question is, do you want something here in this section that also talks about what you currently have?
I'd love to see, and I don't know how much trouble I'm, I'm getting you in here, but I would love to see what our vocational programs are over the past, let's say, census period compared to some of those other counties or some of those other counties in the same region. I mean, that, that to me tells me the story that I'd like to bring back to the county and say, look, this is the thing, these are things we should really be doing. And in particular, as it relates to those people who leave the county to go to work, you know, if, if we had more inside the county, if we had more vocational training inside the county, that would encourage more vocations inside the county, maybe these people wouldn't be so ready to leave. And I'm, I'm referring to the other charts where you, where you show people are leaving.
Can I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to see if, if at least four areas that, and I'm, I'm a little prejudiced, but, and electrical, HVAC, carpentry, car mechanic type things, or anybody else have any other ideas? But that's full welding, you know, it's, if we could have a comparison to see, we don't have some of those things. We don't have any HVAC in Buckingham. We have to go to Lynchburg or somewhere to get it and I'd like to see that.
Masonry?
Masonry, that's another one, yeah. I mean, just something like that to give us an idea.
Is that possible, Todd? I mean?
Right off, right offhand, I couldn't tell you. I mean, we can definitely try. It's probably going to be involved some outreach to the local school systems. It might take a little time, but we can definitely try, see what we can get for you.
I think it'd be great information, I really do.
So, we'll see what we can do on that.
You wouldn't really need to put that in a chart, would you? You could almost do a narrative with that. This is available vocational schools and then what, what they offer.
We could do that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, maybe what I'd recommend is if you had a chart that showed the vocations down one side, counties across the other with check marks, that seems to me that it would be an ample comparison. Is that, would that be helpful or would that be as good as a narrative for you?
I think either or would be fine. If you want a chart, that's fine with me. Just trying to save a little time. I don't know which was easier.
I'm not sure which one's going to be any easier than the other.
Okay. But I like Pete's idea. I don't have a problem with that at all.
Yeah, okay.
Now, do you want other counties there too?
I'd like to see what it looks like.
Comparison.
In the reading, yeah.
Good.
Okay.
I mean, what we have in this comprehensive plan is two charts that relate to people who coming into the county to work and who are going out of the county to work. If you take a look at those charts, there's a lot more people going out of the county than there are coming into the county. My question is, why are they going out of the county? And if that relates to vocations, then we really have some work to do to get businesses here that relate to those vocations in Buckingham if we have the opportunity to do so. That's my point.
I understand. And I think the issue you got is you just don't have the opportunity to even have to get the vocational.
Or competitive wages otherwise at existing businesses.
Yeah, we can definitely work on that, see what we can come up with for you on that.
Thank you, sir.
Now, I don't know if anybody had any questions on the, on pages 21, 22, 23, or 24. You'll notice we do have some stuff highlighted on page 25.
I hit you on 21.
Okay.
I'm just curious to find out, we have a lot of people working in the county government. And I'm just curious to find out whether or not, when you take a look at the per capita income here, whether or not we ought to be breaking out government versus private.
Hmm.
At least county government versus private.
I'd have to figure, I'd have to see if there's a way to do that. I, off the top of my head, I can't tell you if the census breaks it out that way or not. There might be a way to find out what local government, the average local government worker makes. I'm not sure how good, good that would be.
Might not even be helpful. I'm just, I, I forget the question. I just, it was interesting to me and I might not, might not have any bearing on what we're trying to do here.
Okay.
Do you have a question on number 20, page, page 23, though?
Okay.
What you have here are two charts. One's household income, one's individual income, I think, median family income and then median household income.
Right.
So, the question is, when you look at Buckingham, the median household income is less than the median family income. I'm curious to find out how that can be.
That would probably take, take an inquiry. The Weldon Cooper Center might be able to expand on that.
Does that make any sense to you, though, as a statistician?
Well, the one thing I would say is if you look at the chart, that's consistent for all the counties where the family income's higher than the household income.
Mr. George, go ahead.
Could it be there just multiple families within that household?
My, my.
And then there's some that have no income?
No income at all.
Or very low income. And so, when you go to the median income within that household, this family, that family, one family is actually supporting.
But if you had more families in one household and the median income of the family is higher, then the household income should also be higher. It does, the statistic doesn't make any sense to me. I'm just curious to find out if there's, if there's some underlying reason here for the difference in this chart because it just doesn't, statistically, it doesn't make any sense to me unless you're telling me that family income consists of more than one household.
The definition at the top of this breaks it down between family income. It talks about the definition as far as if they're related persons or unrelated persons occupying a housing unit.
Oh, okay.
So, that might help you a little bit.
Well, I read it and it still didn't make any sense to me. I mean, if you, if you think about the numbers, okay, even if you had married couples and their family income was higher and they had two of those in the same house and they weren't the same family, the household income should be higher.
No.
Sure.
No. So, if me and my husband were a family income, but we added in an elder who made zero dollars, that brings down the household income as an average. So, now we're supporting, you know, if you take a two-person household that are earners and then add in someone who's making zero dollars, that does bring down the household.
Unless, if you're talking on a household personal income by person, I would agree. But I don't think that's what a household income is. It's the total income of the household.
But the household income is defined as people who aren't related to each other by birth, adoption, or marriage. So, it could be four roommates. It could be four individuals that graduated college together and they're living together. So, that, that's going to be a household. The family income is defined by the relationship status.
Okay. All right, thank you. That, that kind of helps.
Now, you may recall, going to page 25, we discussed this last month about which data to use for commuter inflow and commuter outflow. And the decision was made to use the longitudinal employer household dynamic data from the Census Bureau. So, we just have some verbiage in there. You see underlined and in red explaining that. And then we have the two tables on the next page. I'll give you a chance to look at that and see if you have any questions on that.
Question, when you look at Buckingham, Buckingham County to Buckingham in chart one and in chart two, shouldn't they be the same? Or am I missing something there, too? You're looking at Buckingham to Buckingham.
Hmm.
Unless I'm reading it wrong.
I'm sorry.
You're on page number 26.
26.
And then you look at chart number, whatever that, no, the first chart on that page and the second chart on that page. When you're looking at Buckingham to Buckingham, in both those charts, why aren't they the same? You know what I'm saying?
One's inflow, one's outflow.
Well, they're both Buckingham to Buckingham.
I see what you're saying. We're going, we're going to have to double check those numbers.
You understand where my confusion is there?
Mm-hmm.
But I'll, I'll make a comment with regard to the rest. This is a good chart because it does show that our people are leaving, more people are leaving to work than they are coming in, which goes back to the other reason, the other question I had with regard to vocations.
So, it's good data. I see, I see what you're saying. There's a, there's a little discrepancy there. We'll, we'll look into it and see what we can find out on that.
All right.
Todd, one more question about these two charts. Do you know the source of these data? Do they pull the data by zip code for workers?
Hmm.
I ask, you know, there are a lot of people who live in Buckingham who have Scottsville, which is Albemarle mailing addresses.
I see what you mean. I see what you mean.
I'm just curious. I'm not seeing the data as right or wrong.
Let me, let me look into that further. So, that, that could explain the discrepancy there. And scroll, moving on to page, I think 29, there was some, no, I'm sorry, 28 and 29. We just color coded those on the, on the change column for you.
I do have a question on 28.
Okay.
On the job count, physical, well, let's see, let me go back to a different one, 28 and 29, yeah. If you take a look at the first chart, the supervision of, of production workers is going up by 14.73 percent. And in the, in the chart below it that shows shrinking jobs, the same group is going down by 4.43 percent. So, the question is, am I reading it wrong or what's going on here?
Okay, hold on.
And I don't know, I just picked those two. I don't know if there's any others that are, that are a little bit wonky in that regard.
Hmm. That's something we're going to need to check with the Employment Commission.
It, now, it could be that there's a difference in the, in the descriptions or something, but I mean, I'd like to have you look at both of those. I think those are very good charts. I'd like to make sure that you look at those, if there's any kind of those, if there's something wonky about those, I think we need to kind of clean that up because I think those are good charts.
Right. No, understood. We'll see what we can find on that.
The other thing I'd ask you on the chart in front of that, where you have salaries, I think it is, yeah, take a look at just the physical therapists. There's 111 as of 2020 suggesting going to 124 by 2030 and your average salary is $97,677. So, I would ask you, where are all these physical therapists? Because I don't know that they're all in Buckingham.
Well, I will point out that this figures for the South Central workforce investment.
I'm sorry.
So, it's not, yeah, it's not going to be for just one county.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah, unfortunately, this data is not, we have not been able to get this at the county level. It's for that 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 counties.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's fine. That's my, my bad.
Okay. But we'll.
The chart is for growth occupations. The second chart just below figure 20 is for.
Yeah, I understand. I'm sorry, you were saying, Nikki?
Figure 20, those percentages of change are related to growth in the South Central workforce. And then on figure 21.
Right.
So, they're telling you.
Right. So, in, in the first chart, it shows one category is growth and in the second chart, it shows you shrinkage, same category.
Well, we'll look into that. It could be that there's a, there's a definition issue that, that's causing that.
Thank you.
And going on to the end of section two, we have our unemployment data. And then we have the employment by industry. And then at the end, a list of top employers in the county. So, just take a quick look at that and see what, what issues you might have. at that and see what issues you might have. If nobody has anything else, we can jump into draft section three. And I'm going to apologize, the one, the version you got had some formatting issues. I'm going to hand out a revised. It's the same information, it's just formatting's been cleaned up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think what happened is somehow that first figure on page thirty-four, somehow it ended up a little bigger than it should have, and it knocked our source line down, which basically knocked everything off. So the first part of section three, we had gone over last month. And I believe it was to... I'm going to turn from wrong to... up to the dry hydrant locations, or right before the dry hydrant locations. But I'll go over those first few pages with you. And just the changes that we've made. Page thirty-eight, we did, and thirty-nine, we did confirm with the Virginia's Heartland Regional Authority that the Heartland Regional Industrial Park, there is a revenue share agreement that Buckingham participates in. So we did leave that there, but I did move that bullet point down, so we can make the map a little bit bigger. On page thirty-eight.
Hey, Nikki, that piece that's kind of in the brown there, that's a soccer field? That's the piece that we talked about?
It's beside the scold that's...
Yeah, yeah, that's all, that's... So that's never been in that hundred and twenty-five acres, or a hundred... But not since we've been looking at this from the... Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Yeah. Okay.
If nobody has anything else on thirty-eight and thirty-nine, if you jump to page forty...
Question on thirty-nine.
Mm-hmm.
We just had, I think there are two new places in, I think, in Buckingham where we have practitioners. Are those included in this? Does anybody know? No, I mean, doesn't this include all healthcare facilities?
Well, it's intended to. I mean, I know that second-to-last paragraph, we talked about Troublesome Creek.
Yeah.
That last paragraph, we probably do need to rework, because I understand that facility has now, has recently opened?
Yes.
Are both of these open now, the one that Chris Huck operates?
I think that one's the one just opened.
One on Troublesome Creek and this new one?
Chris Huck's actually operates Troublesome Creek Family Medicine in Dillon.
The old dentist's office.
Dr. Bryant started years ago before he built his new office. He's there. He's still, I believe, in the process of updating structure on Troublesome Creek for commercial usage, but in operating his business out of that office, and he has house calls as well.
So we should include those, right? Don't you think that needs to be included in this list?
It actually is in that second paragraph from the bottom, page thirty-nine.
Yeah, I see it down there. I wonder if it should be in a bullet.
The office he's using currently?
Well, since he's going to be, it's going to be a real short time before he's in his own clinic, right?
I can verify with...
I mean, if he's going to do that this year, early next year, I think it ought to be in a bullet.
The bullet it lists specifies hospitals within sixty miles from the county line. It's not all general healthcare.
Should we include all general healthcare? I mean, that's been a big question every time we get into either the, either when we're doing planning, or when we're doing economic development, everybody asks where the healthcare... I mean, we're excited about the fact that these people are opening up these clinics. I think they're, I think they ought to be noted.
I think it gets more press as a paragraph. It at least gives a history of it, rather than just a single bullet point.
I think that, I agree, the bullets refer to the hospitals within the area.
They do.
Within, and then the paragraphs mention what is here locally. And this is something can be updated, because we're working, we don't have to put a timeline on it. All we need to do is just mark it to know that come back at, when we finalize our document, to see where they are.
Fair comment.
Because Huck's could have, Chris Huck's could have moved by that time, or not. And it's not something that has to be finalized tonight. But we can just put an asterisk by it, just to revisit it, when we do like our final, or next to the final review. Yeah, it's nothing that has to be decided on tonight.
Fair comment. I agree.
And you notice on page forty, we do talk about the two dentist offices in the county. Then going down on page forty, we have some added verbiage, one paragraph under museums and one under religious facilities. Under museums, we talk about the Houserite Mu... Yeah, I'm sorry, the Adams Museum. And then down at the bottom, we mentioned the Virginia Nazarene Caphen Retreat Center. Just a real brief description of each. Any questions on that page? Hearing nothing, jumping to page forty-one. We did edit the list of solid waste recycling facilities. I did check back with Lynn Hill to confirm the information you see there, both on page forty-one and the map on page forty-two.
Todd, I need to ask a question.
Okay.
And I'm not trying to be nitpicky here, but you know, I'm getting to be, I'm old, so I can't see real small print. Is there some way we can put these legends either on the bottom, outside the map, to make them bigger? Or does that...
Are you talking about the map on page forty-two?
Well, there's a couple of them. I'm going to get back to those later.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean, it'd be so much more convenient if we could easily read those. I mean, it's up, maybe it can't be done, but...
Let me see what I can do with that. I wonder, would another possibility just be take that legend out altogether, because I do number the sites on the list on the, on page forty-one.
All right.
Would it be better if I just took the legend out of the map on page forty-two? Would that...
That'd be my choice, but you got to ask the commission.
So you, and what you're asking, Todd, is to just do away with that?
Do away with the legend on the map on page forty-two, because they're numbered already.
And it does say, it does already reference map four.
Yeah. So...
It'd be my choice. Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay. So I'll remove that legend. All right. I don't see it highlighted here, but the bottom of page forty-two, we did update the number of people employed by the sheriff's office. And we spoke, see, Lauren, I forget whether she spoke directly with the sheriff's officer, with Cody Davis on that, but we got, we did get updated information on that, bottom of page forty-two, going to page forty-three. And moving to page forty-four, map five, we're just including the county dry hydrant locations. The data's from Virginia Department of Forestry, but I did run this by the County Department of Emergency Services to have them look at this before I put it in the map. But, you know, if you see anything it looks like questionable, just let us know on that.
I'm, I know there's a dry hydrant. If you go down fifteen, looking at this map from top to bottom, if you go down fifteen, off on Evans Mill Road, there's a house there that has a sign in front of it that has a dry hydrant. I don't know if that's officially noted or not. I mean, that's the only one I noticed was missing.
Evans Mill Road, that's around six twenty-one?
Yeah.
I'll check and see what we can find out about that.
All right.
So these hydrants, they are coming off of ponds, or is that basically where they all come in?
Yeah.
Have any water down there?
Check that, okay. Then going to page forty-five, we talk about telecommunications, internet.
Excuse me.
Just a little bit of history there about some of the stuff that's been done. And the map on page forty-six is courtesy of Cityscape Consultants. We saw no point in trying to recreate that.
We have a couple of proposals for towers in the county. Would it be worth it for us to put like a dot and a red circle around where those are going to be, or does that make any difference?
Well, if you look at the map, there are two spots that are, that have yellow circles around the dots.
Right, I see it.
Yeah. Are there some others that are not showing up here?
Yeah, we have one off on Shepherd's, I think. Isn't there one just that we just approved? And it's up. And there's one other one. There's one over on, it's not O'Hill.
Axdale Road.
Yeah. I wonder if those should be in there.
Axdale, they have one?
They have not obtained the building permit yet for Axdale, but I don't think it'll be long.
But, yeah, I'm thinking maybe a dot with a circle around it or something, so we know where the proposed ones are, at least so far.
Trying to think of the best way to handle that.
It may be more practical to come back to this before we finalize it, because we got several in the pipeline that are coming. And just make a note, Todd, that we'll...
Revisit.
We'll revisit this before we finalize it.
Okay. All right.
Then map seven, that data is straight from Mid-Atlantic Broadband, so I just put that into a map for you, but that's showing where their fiber is in Buckingham County.
Yes. Last meeting, I thought we maybe discussed maybe replacing this map with showing overall coverage for residents, so that there was a visual of how many residents were covered by broadband?
Did we discuss replacing it or putting it in a separate map?
That I don't remember.
I don't recall either.
But either way. I think that's more helpful, to be able to show which regions are unserved, as I know we're covered certainly by more than just Mid-Atlantic Broadband at this point.
What we might be able to do... I'm thinking, I'm just thinking out loud here, because I know for Notaway County's plan, we were able to actually get a map showing where all their projects were. So I might be able to do something similar for Buckingham. I'll make a note. We'll see what we can do on that. Map eight on page forty-eight is, I'll tell you right now, that's just a placeholder. I'm actually working on trying to get a map of just Buckingham County, but we have a placeholder in there right now. So if all goes well, that'll look different, then we can come back to you next month. I have any questions, any questions on that, or the verbiage on natural fuel, natural gas and fuel sources? If not, going down the bottom of page forty-eight on to forty-nine, the recreation we pulled from a variety of different sources.
The only comment to the recreation section would be that we covered what is specifically provided by Buckingham County, but not the Buckingham County Youth League.
We'll make a note to add that. Civic organizations, festivals, community events, commerce, that, those, what you see there is not meant to be all-inclusive, just gives you some of the highlights. If you think of something that you don't see here that you think should be added, definitely let us know.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
I may need to change River State Park.
Are you missing one, I'm trying?
James River State Park.
I saw that.
I see the affomatics Buckingham State Forest.
So the second paragraph on page forty-nine, we do mention James River State Park.
Ah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could you add that James River State Park has the dark sky designation?
Dark sky designation, okay. Yep. Nobody has anything else on page forty-nine. We'll jump over to pages fifty and fifty-one. Excuse me. Needless to say, if we tried to include every site in Buckingham County that's deemed historical, it'd be a very busy map. So we tried to locate, we tried to include the more prominent ones on both map nine and nine A. And nine A is really just a close-up of the area between Dillon and the Courthouse Village.
Todd, it might be beneficial on map nine to do the same thing, maybe take your legend out so you can expand the map a little bit, and then have maybe just a bullet, you can still have the table, just have it listed where it's larger and people can read it.
Okay, so basically just list them all with the corresponding numbers and then take the legend out of the map. Is that...
Yeah, that'll just take these down, however you want to do it. That way you can expand, make the map larger, and then have your, the list of it.
Okay.
You don't have Haddon Ferry on there, do you?
I do not.
Yeah, I didn't check everything.
So is Haddon Ferry considered to be in Buckingham or Albemarle?
Runs across the...
It's in Buckingham.
Yeah, you've actually got two. You've got Warren's, Warren and Haddon's.
But Warren's aren't served.
Yeah, Haddon's still is, so.
I'll check that, yeah. We can add that. So going down to page 51, we talk about the group originally called what Virginia's Retreat, it's now known as Virginia's Crossroads, and we talk about the Civil Rights and Education Heritage Trail. That trail has three sites in Buckingham County. And what you see is on page 52, I have a map of the overall trail. If we move stuff around, I might be able to expand this map a little bit to make it a little easier to read, but I did also include, we created a separate map for just the sites in Buckingham County, which is map 10A on page 53. start getting to natural resources. Excuse me.
Wait, I do have a question.
Okay.
When you refer to a historical marker, what is, what are you referring to, the sign or the, or is your, or the marker that is up by there, that gives you information on that particular site?
You're talking about the Carter G. Woodson birthplace?
Any of them.
Well, in this particular case...
Because you have historical marker about a Carter G. Woodson birth site, but all three, all three of those sites have a stand, has a stand. So that's what I'm saying, are you talking about the roadside sign, roadside sign, or are you talking about the upright marker as the historical marker?
I'm not sure I understand the distinction. I could tell you with the Carter Woodson birthplace, my understanding is in that, where that location is, there's actual a, I don't know what you call it, a monument, but it's...
There are a couple of things there. There is a monument, but just like, but there are also the black and white signs that you see along the road.
No, this is not meant to signify where those black and white signs are.
That's what I'm trying to say, what the historical marker, because at Ellis Acres Park and at the one-room school at Lee Wayside, there's also markers there.
Okay.
All three of those sites have markers, but they don't have the black and white roadside signs.
Okay, yeah.
That's why I was asking what the historical marker means.
Okay, so, yeah, no, we're not talking about the black and white road signs, we're... So would you like me to reword that on the Carter G. Woodson birthplace?
I just wanted to be consistent, because one place you have Ellis Acres, and another place you have Ellis Acres Park. So I just, all I want is the wording to be consistent in what...
Let's see. Okay, I see, I see what you mean. Okay, so, okay.
Okay, on page 51, at the bottom, it says Buckingham Training School, Ellis Acres. And then over here, you have Ellis Acres Park.
Okay.
I just want the wording to be consistent with what you're doing.
Okay.
You're doing.
Okay, I see what you're saying there. We'll make those changes. We'll make it all, make it all match.
And is the name Ellis Acres Park? Is it Ellis Acres or is it Ellis Acres Park? I don't know. I don't know, but...
My understanding is it's Park, but I can double-check that.
I'll go back and redesign myself.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't know what the official name is. It just will say Ellis Acres.
Well, honestly, I'll be totally honest with you, where it says Ellis Acres as opposed to Ellis Acres Park, I believe that was pulled from the State Department of Historic Resources, and I was just using their verbiage, but...
Okay.
But no, we can, we can be sure that's all consistent, and I'll double-check the actual name to be sure we have it right.
Ellis Acres Park Incorporated. Ellis Acres Park Incorporated.
What page are you on?
Googled.
Oh, you Googled, I'm sorry, I thought you were on one of the pages.
And then I see... I see Ellis Acres, first things I see, Ellis Acres Park Incorporated. And Ellis Acres Park seems to be, because that's their, like Ellis Acres Park dot org Buckingham, but whatever it is, I just want the wording to be consistent in the document.
All right. If nobody has anything else on that, we'll jump to pages 50, bottom of 53 going on to I will note the climate data, we tried to find climate data for either Dillon or Buckingham Courthouse or someplace in the county. National Weather Service, we cannot find it, so we're using Farmville for now to give you a basis.
At the middle school? I'm sorry.
That might be, you might be thinking of a WeatherNet site, which is, that's not quite the same thing.
Okay.
I know what you're talking about, I think it's Channel 12 has the WeatherNet sites, where they give you, they give you like temperature and precip for the day.
I'm just talking about weather bug.
If nothing else on page 54, page 55, I didn't change, I didn't make any changes of that map. I reached out to Peter Francisco Soil and Water Conservation, and they, and they told me that the information in that map was up to date, so I just basically put that map Map 12 on page 56 is showing watersheds in the state, but I added an extra map on 57, Hopefully this map will be of use to you. It's basically subwatersheds within the James River watershed. I got that information from DCR.
Help me, Todd, I don't know what a sub watershed is.
Let's see, do I, trying to remember if I actually...
Tried to find whatever the definition would be in here, I didn't see it.
You know what, I don't have the definition in here.
In any event, if you could go ahead and put that definition in, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a note to put into, to define the sub watershed.
Todd, it might be beneficial to do the same thing with that list, it's expanded, you know, make it overall.
Oh, I see, I see what you mean.
And then have the definition above the list of the, you know, you got the sub watershed, give the definition, and then have them listed.
How's the group feel about that? They, same thing as the other maps?
I think it'd be consistent, I don't mind, these are pretty small.
All the purple seem to run together.
I wasn't going to say that, but yes.
Okay. All right. Making it to do that, okay, we'll make that change. Then map 13 on page 58 is your flood zones in the county. This is this, that, it's from FEMA. And I recently created this map for the hazard mitigation plan, so I just pulled that map and put it in here. The flood zone definitions have changed through the years. They used to call them 100-year floods, they now call them 1% chance annual flood. Basically, the difference between the tan and the pink is that where you have, where you see the tan, FEMA does not have any base flood elevation data. Basically, that just tells you, for instance, for a structure, it gives you their elevation above sea level and at what point they would flood. That's a real simple explanation, but that map is there for your, for your perusal.
Is there some way you could add some of that explaining what this, the significance of these various colors are, is that, would that be too much trouble?
And what I can do...
You're talking about the flood zones?
Maybe add some verbiage about the base flood elevation data.
Something that would tell us the significance of some of this stuff.
Okay, we'll put something in there for you. And moving on to page 59, these are the river stream, the locations in or around Buckingham County that measure flow rates. And we have a, that first paragraph there give you a little bit of an explanation about
You know, Todd, I'll tell you, I'm pretty familiar with these flow rate things.
Okay.
Been on a river for a long time myself, but I will tell you that it might help, and I don't know if you can get this data, but if you're looking at James River at Scottsville, if you told people the width of that river, then that number for 6270 becomes, would have a significance relative to the width. As an example, Appomattox River at Farmville at 457 might be more dangerous than the James River at 6270, just because this may be a 10-foot, a 10-foot wide stretch of water versus a 200-foot stretch. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So I don't know if that, if you have that data, but, or would even, I mean, I'm curious to find out why we even have this in here, but if, if what you're trying to do is tell people the flow of a river, you know, essentially at high flow, low flow, wherever it's at, then they need to know the significance of that number.
Okay, we'll see if we can find on that. Short, the median answer is, I don't know if it is or not, but we can, we can see. Now, bottom of page 59 going on to page 60, the other comp plans we've worked on, we talk about number of farms, we talk about agricultural data. This one gets a bit of conversation usually because there's usually some dispute about whether this data we're presenting here is accurate. So take a look at all this, and if you see anything that looks out of whack, we can follow up and, and see if we can look into it a little further. And really, the same thing applies for the figure on page 61.
When I was looking through the narrative, does this include rental farms, like if you rent some land to a farmer even though you own it? Or is this just specific ownership, farm ownership?
You know what, I am not sure. We can look into that.
Well, the reason I bring that up, because it's quite a bit of land now, in the last five or six years, it's been taken out of sort of fallow condition and being rented.
Okay.
And I didn't know if that was reflected in these, these numbers or not.
I'll be honest...
And I don't know if you're going to be able to get that, so.
No, I'm not sure. We can definitely, we can definitely see, we can find out on that.
I think you're taking the census reports from the individual farmers, is what they, I think that's what they're doing.
That's probably so. And if that's the case, it may not show, still be accurate, because, for example, we lease 50 acres at my wife's home, and it's an out-of-county operation, been doing it for years, so it wouldn't reflect in this.
Do know that if the census report does require, if I rent land to somebody, I have to post that in my report.
Does it give you, whether it's in numerous counties? Oh, okay, that may be reflected in this, or at that time anyway.
Anywhere you rent land, rent property, yes, I have to do that, you probably do too. Okay.
Yeah, we can look into that. Now, the soil map on page 62, what we're planning to do, because I can already know what you're going to say.
Please tell me, please tell me what I'm going to say. I want to hear that.
You're going to ask us to move this legend, and I know you want us to be consistent on this, those, that's a lot... Those, that's a lot, a lot of soil types. What we've done with the other counties is we would, for the print copies of the comp plan, we would actually print a bigger version of the soil map, which is considerably easier to read than what you see here in front of you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Are you saying the map itself is gonna be easier to read, or the legend?
Well, both.
Okay.
Because what we're gonna do for the print copies of the plan, we're gonna print, print this particular page out bigger.
Okay, as a fold-out or something?
Uh-huh, yep.
Todd, I'd, I'd be interested to understand whether or not, I mean, it looks to me like Buckingham has soil that represents everything in the United States here. The question I would ask is, would it, would it be as advantageous for us to also understand wetlands versus other? And, you know, I don't know if you...
Wetlands. You want that, would you like as a separate map?
Well, I don't know. I'm asking Mr. Chairman and the commission. I'm not, it's, it's, it seems like it's a subject that comes up often, particularly on the commission. And now that we're, we're trying to put solar farms in, and we're trying to, try to distinguish where, where industry ought to go or houses ought to go, I mean, the question of wetland comes up quite a bit. And to me, that's as important as the soil consistency.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Also, I would rather just see the types of soil listed out rather than trying to make that map of Buckingham a better picture for somebody to see, simply because it looks like dirt. I mean, that, it looks like dirt. And I've enlarged it on, on my screen, trying to find my, my home.
So instead of a map, just list the different soil types?
List the types of soil, that, and it'll be larger print because, and even trying to match this color to these colors that you had here, the color key, is not going to work. The wetlands and, that Mr. Kapaczynski was referring to, would that go with, like with the watersheds and wetlands?
Well, we could put it really wherever you want. It's, um, you know, we, we could, we could actually put it, we could put it there, I don't know if you'd want it with the watersheds or right after the flood zones, or...
Because what I'm seeing under the subwatersheds, you're listing creeks throughout Buckingham. They're connected to, the subwatersheds are connected to the creeks within Buckingham. And, so, so I'm thinking would the wetlands go in that area also?
So maybe make wetlands map 13 and the flood zones map 14?
It just seems like it all goes together to me. I'm not sure.
I'm just trying to figure out Todd, what, what, what significant, it seems to me that if I were looking for the significance of this particular map, this soil, kind of soil in Buckingham, you know, I'm scratching my head, I'm thinking, well, we got a lot of agricultural land, we got a lot of timberland, there's a few gravel pits around, we have some, you know, I, I mean, I, I'm trying to, how do I use this? You know, what, what, what good is it for me?
Well, if you know your soil types, it serves several factors, if you're building a road.
Right, I understand that.
Yes, or if you're gonna build a home, buy a lot.
But if I look at this map and all these different soil types, if there are a few significant things we need to know, those are the things I'd like to focus on. So if, if you're saying, okay, we got construction, you know, buildings, we've got construction roads, we've got agricultural, we've got, we've got areas where we want to put solar farms, we got, you know, if, if you, if you're saying what we want to do is, is focus on, on the kind of soil where we might want to put different structures or different kinds of businesses or homes, then I think that becomes, I mean, instead of looking at 100 different kinds of soils here, I'd probably maybe, I think, I don't know how to use all this information. It just, and I don't even know how to put a finger, I'm, I don't know, it all looks like dirt to me, too. I mean...
Well, there's actually a soil reference map, and, you know, you get more detail from that. Because you look up the specific soil type, and it gives you a description. Now, that wouldn't be in here.
I was actually just gonna ask you, we reference, just have a reference to the soil survey and then, like Ms. Gooden suggested, and just list the different types of soils?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
You deal with this. I know, your job, you know, you know.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's...
So I would defer to what you think needs to be here with regard to the soil.
It depends, the soil type depends on the purpose that you're trying to locate there. I'm not trying to...
So what do we, what, what do we need to include?
Well, what, you know, I think what may be most beneficial is do what you're saying, list these soil types, but then give a reference to where you can go and look up specifically what that soil type will allow you. It'll give you information and all on it. Certain soil types, or, you know, you can't, you won't, you can build roads on them, but you're gonna have a constant problem with runoff, erosion, or whatever, because it's just a soil type. And/or if you buy, you're looking at an area and you see a non-perceptible soil, then the chances are you may not want to buy that property because you're not gonna, you know, you always want to go onsite and test it, but it, you know, it's just, it gives you a reference as far as locating what you're trying to do, what specific purpose you're trying to do for that piece of land.
Yeah, I agree with that. It just seems to me that that, that particular map...
I think take the map out, I think it's confusing, I think.
Do a reference document, I think that's...
Do a reference document, I think that might be more beneficial.
Okay, we can do that. And along those lines, on page 63 is the rock mineral type map of any use to you?
Yeah, same question. I can't, I can't even tell the difference between the colors.
Okay.
Which one are we on, I'm sorry?
Uh, map 15 on page 63.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, because of how many different types there are, it's kind of a struggle to differentiate between the different colors.
But in the county, we're looking at things like kyanite, gold, lithium, things of that nature that, that have been coming up rather consistently. We have a mining issue here. I mean, it's, it's important for us. I'm wondering, I don't see any kyanite in here unless it's called something different. And I don't see any lithium, I don't see any gold, I don't see, the minerals that, that are really coming up in our conversation, I don't see in this map, I don't even see in the legend, unless they're named otherwise. So can you help me out with this one? I, Mr. Chairman, I just don't understand.
So what you, what you really would like to see rather than the different types of rock mineral types available, located in, and this comes from, I'm assuming, geological.
This is from Virginia Energy. It was the formerly known as Department of Mines, Minerals and Energy.
Right.
Yeah.
But Pete is quite right. It would be probably more beneficial to try to narrow it down to what the county is, what mine operations you already got and what, where those are located, as well as the, you know, the deposits, not the operations itself. And maybe narrow it down some.
Things that are pertinent to the county. I think that's what I'm, I'm interested in.
Well, these are in the county, but I, I don't know what some of these are because, you know, sandstone, I don't know what that is, of course.
Yeah, my understanding is these are underlying rock types.
Yeah.
I think if there was a map that showed you where all the gold was, that'd be a different, different meter we could be having all the time.
That'd be a good map, I wouldn't mind that one.
I'm not, I would assume that information should be available, but I don't know, Todd.
We can look for it.
It's something you'd have to take a look at and see.
Yeah. We'll, we'll look for that, we'll, we'll see what we can do on that one.
I mean, is this map, Mr. Chairman, is this map?
Which, are you referring?
This mineral map, or this, the rock type map? I know schist, I know what some of these things are, but is it important? Because again, you're looking at soil types for where we might consider putting things, is it also important for us to understand the rock types? I mean, is that, is that the benefit of this particular? I don't want to take anything out that becomes a benefit for us, but...
Well, you could, I mean, if, what we could do is in here, you could leave this one, but try to, try to then scrutinize down or get more specific for what affects the county. For just another map, maybe that's a better avenue to take, Todd, is just leave this one alone, but then try to see if you can get one that, you know, a little bit more specific.
Okay.
For, for operations we have and potential operations we have in the county.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do on that. So page 64, we talk about forest land. Page 65, is map 16 of any use to you? So this is, this is to show areas where there might be a higher risk for fire, where, I guess urban might not be, urban's the term they use, but where, where you might see development interact with forested land and increase the risk of fires, damaging, fire, fire risk to homes, rather.
So everything in green is what?
Low.
Low what?
Low risk to homes.
Because there's no trees around?
Well, because there's, there's not much interface between houses and, and forested areas.
Okay, so there may be forests there, but there may be fewer homes.
Fewer homes, right, right.
And that one, that one was a little bit mind-boggling, too. You know, an overlay of this thing, if you overlaid this with our fire departments, might be a benefit. I don't know if you've done that, did you do that? I guess maybe, no, you didn't. But if you took an overlay of our firefighting facilities, as opposed to having it in a separate map, and just overlay it on this thing, do you think that would be something people would be interested in seeing?
When you say the, are you talking about the dry hydrants? Or are you talking about the...
Well, you might want to have one with regard to, what I'm talking about is available firefighting. So I don't know, maybe fire stations, maybe the dry hydrants are important, I don't know. But it, it would be an interesting thing if you've got these various risk areas color-coded. If you put in there where the firefighting stations were, or maybe where the dry hydrants were, wherever there was a facility that would be able to fend off some kind of a danger, it would be an interesting map. Otherwise, I have no idea how to even use this.
What's the group's pleasure on that?
Looks like it's kind of widespread, I mean...
Yeah, I don't know that you're gonna be able to accomplish that.
Without also incorporating what the population is in those areas.
Close to the road, you're gonna have a fire.
That's what it looks like.
That's what it, it does look like, yeah.
But it doesn't really look like it's one area of the county that's more at risk than another or anything, I mean...
Rapid fire, it's right here. You got some that are kind of off the grid. But the fire stations would be interesting.
Todd, let me ask you a question. Maybe this chart here would be more informational. We're gonna have our growth areas and growth quarters, you know, they may be changed or whatever. Maybe when we, this would fit in there because that's where most of your growth is gonna start to, is gonna probably occur anyway. And it could just, I don't know, what you could do is just leave this as is, but we'll address it for each growth, as we set up, revisit our growth quarters.
Right.
Maybe then puts that rating in for that specific growth quarter or growth area.
That's a good idea.
We could do that.
That would be, I think would be more informative for the planning commission because then you could see sort of the risk of, you know, some, a business coming in, you know, so...
Put another fire station in.
Possible, yeah. Anyhow, that's, that was just a suggestion.
Okay, we, we can listen and look into that.
I think this overall is fine, but maybe then we can just refine it for those growth areas and growth quarters.
I'm looking at this map as it's printed here, and what I can enlarge on the screen, and trying to find my house and look at fires and look at danger regions. And unless I can enlarge this map, I'm thinking whoever's gonna read this comp plan or look at this specific, cannot enlarge it to find where they live and look at the dangers. And I'm trying to think of the most recent fire in the area and where it was located. And it's like, I don't know where they get, why they make these areas high-risk, you know? Like these little hotspots I'm looking at. And this is in my area because the last big fire was down in the woods behind a church.
Right, well, these are more geared towards home subdivisions, fire, you know, right close to them, because what you have is forest. Well, I'll tell you, a perfect example is you look down here on 20, at the, almost at the end. And you have, what is, I can't think of the name of this big subdivision down there.
Forest Ridge.
Forest Ridge.
Forest Ridge.
They built that, roads, homes and all, right in the middle of a lava plantation. So your risk is much higher for a fire there because of that fact. So that's what this is trying to get you to, so I don't know how you're gonna get every little specific area in the county.
Right, but I'm saying, just my looking at this chart that's printed on the paper versus me being able to enlarge on the screen and see what's going on. Paper's not helping me. The screen, I can see, oh yeah, look at...
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, look at these areas.
Well, the only, I think the only way you're gonna be able to, you could take this map and perhaps do it in quarters, quadrants and expand it. Think that would suffice for what you're trying?
I don't know whether I'm gonna need it. Like I said, the fire was like deadly. There was something burning over on his property. And then there was that, it was down a fire road, a fire trail, behind one of the churches off of my road. You know, it was back in the woods, it looked like somebody had deliberately set, but...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Ask Todd, so this WI risk map that you pulled, is this something that's frequently updated?
I'm not sure how often it's updated. This, the group that does this, I can only tell you that, that what I have there was, is, is recent data.
I asked, you know, if there was a matter that came before the board three or four years from now, new subdivision, something like that, if it was something that we could just go online and examine a particular area that we needed at that time?
I mean, possibly. I mean, I, I'd have to look and see how often they update the data. This is actually, it's, it's, it's a regional for the southern US, so...
But I think it's handy as is, but again, if, you know, if we need to... Gives us a good idea of what the, what it already looks like, and then we could dig deeper.
Focus on most of the board.
Well, I think there's several ways to handle what your concern is. That's one of them, and perhaps, like I say, you could do, if you really want to concentrate, just a couple of ways to address it, by a better description of what the fire rating's on. And that way you can relate to that. Or if we do the, each for the growth areas, that's gonna cover some of it, and then you could do, take the county and divide it into whatever, maybe four, five, or six sections. I don't, Todd, is that something that you could work on, or you think you could get maps, if you really take this one?
Yeah, we could, actually, if you're just talking about taking the maps and zooming into quadrants, we can do that.
Yeah, you could see how, if you could, start with maybe four, and see where, if it's enough to, so, you know, people could understand, or, like Joyce is indicating, maybe find their location and see what the risk is.
So basically, zoom these map, zoom it in, multiple maps showing the different parts of the county zoomed in, is that what I'm hearing?
Like a half a map on a page, which, um.
Mr. Chairman, I do like the idea by overlaying this with the growth areas, though, so I'd like to, I'd like to keep it somehow.
Yeah, I think we can, I think we can do that fairly easily, because we already already have the maps of the growth areas, you know, and then you take this map and overlay it, so, but it's gonna be a little bit more difficult to get it to a more manageable scale, is what Joyce is indicating, so, you can see what you can do.
Mm-hmm.
Or it's on one of the pages where you can unfold it, if you want. Anyhow, whatever's the most. I've seen in pages like that, too. Oh, yeah.
Transparencies, you lay over this.
Lot of options here, Todd.
Good idea, too.
Whatever's the simplest, if you, if you just get a lot of them.
This is how it look, and this is how it look.
Well, you already got this map, if you can section it and zoom it, it may, it may give you at least some basic information for what you're looking for.
Yeah, we can bring that back to you, let you look at those, uh, okay, if nobody else has anything else, we need to schedule our next meeting.
Somebody wants to go home, but if I could ask one more question.
Yes, go ahead, even though everybody wants to go home.
I'm, I'm sorry, on page 36, there's a section about indoor plumbing, and I just don't know how I feel about this section in general, I've been mulling over it, so, uh, the data's gone down, 2023, I'm sure, is even less, which would be a fraction of 0.1 to 0.2 of our population, although the text above says there are still homes within many communities, I don't know that the text and the data go very well together, or that it's a, since we're not really approving development within, without indoor plumbing anymore, is this section even needed in the comp plan?
I'm going to refer to the group on that, that, that's just basically to point out that there are still, uh, some, some houses in, in the region that do, do lack indoor plumbing, uh.
I'm not saying this, this doesn't exist, I just don't know that it, the references to many, and, and such a chunk of the comp plan compared to the data.
I'm going to refer to the group on that one, I mean, it's, um.
Oh, I see you're, I think you'd just like to remove this section.
Unless the, the rest of the commission finds it helpful for either development or otherwise.
Um, what's the feeling of the commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
How does this affect our Amish population?
Right.
Yeah.
Which seems to be growing.
And that's a very good reason to.
Which be, seems to be growing.
And are those captured in data, otherwise, or is that even captured in the data?
I don't know.
I don't either.
But our Amish population.
Right, but, you know, it's housing units lacking indoor plumbing, but if the Amish is doing it purposefully, I don't know that those two things are the same.
So take out within many communities?
I think the question more is whether we want that whole section in, that's what you're getting.
Okay.
What's a, uh, what's, what's opinion some of the other commissioners, what do you think is even necessary to have it in there?
Who else is?
Do you have any other sections of the plan that are in there for less than, smaller fraction of a percentage?
I don't know that it's interesting for anybody, and, and I'm gonna go back to what was said here earlier, culturally, I think you could be embarrassing a group, if you just put it in there, I think in the Amish community, they don't have indoor plumbing, so if we take this whole section out, we're not gonna embarrass anybody, that's my view.
As a rest of, that is sort of that, a majority of the commission feel that way? Not necessary.
Just take it out?
Let's just take it out.
All right, yeah. Okay, I'll strike it.
Good job, man, good catch.
And one more thing, I swear, it's me tonight.
Okay.
On page 41, again, goes back to the consistency in the wording, so we're talking about the sewer systems, says that, however, a small portion of the county is serviced by a public sewer system, but then a couple sentences later, we talk about the additional sewer system in Yogaville, and that is quantified, uh, with its capability, so, I would think that the sewer system for the town of Dillon and Buckingham supplied is bigger than Yogaville, so, I just don't know that we have, it seems to downplay what the county itself can provide, while quantifying what it is that Yogaville does.
So you, do you want us to quantify what the county's system can do?
Either that, or, or strike out the specifics of Yogaville, one or the.
Make it uniform, I, I don't know whether it's necessary to even have the.
Right, that was my feeling.
The statistics there, just take, you know, make reference to, but take out the, the amounts.
Okay.
Because I don't think it's really important.
From a development standpoint, if people are looking at Buckingham as a location to build a business, and we're, we're not off, you know, we're not quantifying what it is that the, the county itself can, but it seems like that we're then marketing Yogaville as a location, that was just my, thank you.
Todd, if we leave it, any other questions for Todd at this time? I believe we're good, Todd, thank you, now we need to, uh, Nikki, we have a, do you know how much is gonna be on the docket, because we had discussed, our next work session is December, but we had decided as a board, we did not vote, that we would move our meeting, because that's actually right after Christmas, a regular meeting.
And regular meeting is December 25th.
Yeah. So, I, so I guess what I'm asking, I know you, do you know at this point how much stuff we'll have on the docket, or possibly have on the docket?
Um, I have a pretty good feeling, so just going into what next week looks like, there will be three public hearings and, um, one introduction, so if the public hearings, if you feel you all have enough information to, to make a recommendation to the board, they may potentially, um, move forward to the board, and then, the one introduction for next week, if you feel that a public hearing is something, um, that would be a next step for that application, that would be the only thing that I would have, barring any application that I potentially could receive the first Friday in December for an introduction, but that would.
Okay, so at this time, it looks like a, a light schedule for meeting, okay.
That next meeting would be Monday, December 18th.
Right, okay.
Or work session.
So Todd, it looks like we, uh, do you know how long your information may take to?
Well, I guess it depends on. We can hear you. Okay, I'll just talk to you from here.
Yeah, that's fine, Todd.
Actually, please use the microphone, because it won't pick up for the minutes of the meeting.
So it really depends on what you want to cover, we have quite a few changes to make to draft sections two and three, so at the very least, we're gonna want to present that to the group, um, so, I, I, it really depends on what the commission's comfortable with, we'll have those revisions, we were actually thinking about having draft section four, which is transportation, but we might want to let that wait until, until the next month.
Okay.
Because transportation's probably gonna be close to the same size as section three, just because of how much information, and, and just so everybody knows, for transportation, uh, part of the code requirement is that VDOT has to review the transportation, there are things they want in it, so, a lot of what you're gonna see, VDOT is telling us, we want to see this in the plan, uh, so just kind of keep that in mind, but, as to your question, it's, uh, it's really the, the commission's pleasure, I mean, we can, we're definitely gonna have revisions of two and threes, how long you think that's gonna take?
Nikki, how would we schedule this, we would, we do the regular meeting first, and then the work session following?
Uh, that would, I would leave that to the pleasure of the planning commission, and I would construct the agenda based upon.
Okay.
I would think that since it was a work session and we'd combine them, you'd have the ability to.
Okay, all right, I was, I was just trying to give Todd some idea whether to be here at 6:00, or whether he could be here at 6:30, I guess we could schedule, here's my suggestion, we go ahead with the regular meeting information, and we'll know better by next, you'll actually know better by next meeting, next, a week from now, so we'll do the regular, if we have only that one application that we have to address, then we could take care of that, and then go right into the work session, now, Todd, is that all right with you, you keep it, and we'll try to be flexible, okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, you're suggesting next week, we would do the regular meeting, and then, and then the same?
The December meeting.
December meeting, not, not the, not the last week of November.
Problem is, our regular scheduled December meeting is like two days after Christmas, so, what we were gonna do is move that, combine that with our work session, which is on the 18th.
Oh, okay, all right.
Have one meeting on the 18th, it'd be good for me.
Yeah. So, anyway, uh, now, we need to take a vote on that, correct, Nikki?
Yes, sir.
I know we talked about a day waiting until next Monday to do it, but we got everyone here, so, as, that's, I need a motion, if that's, if that's the pleasure of the.
Go move.
Yeah, have a second, all right.
And your motion is to move it back from the 25th to the 18th?
Eighteenth, and then have a work session following it.
Right.
Oh, you're all gonna have a work session following that?
Yeah.
Where at?
So you'd have your regular meeting, and then you'd have a work session with him following that meeting.
Next day, or that night, or what?
Same night.
Oh. Yes, all right, we have a motion.
All at one time.
I, that's the motion.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all right, so that has been voted on, we'll do that, Todd, Nikki will let you know next week, she'll have a better handle. All right, very good, that brings us to commission matters and concerns, any commissioners have anything they need to voice at this time? Okay, all right, before we close, I will just wish everybody happy Thanksgiving, and that goes to Todd, but he's out the door, so.
Happy Thanksgiving. A move that we adjourn.
All right, there we go, have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand, we are out of here, thank you.